Randy, will you call the roll?
Yeah. Can we just start with Cynthia?
Yeah.
Cynthia Wiley, present.
Sydney Sandy, present.
Meg Fielding, present.
Larry Dukes, present.
Travis Day, present.
Okay, there being a quorum present, we will continue. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the June 21 meeting. Are there any comments, corrections to those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted and presented.
I second.
Okay, do we have to do that verbally, or can we just say aye? Just, okay. All in favor, aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, new business. First is CZ 2022-0036. You're on.
All right. How are you all doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Doing well. So we have CZ 2022-0036, Kimberly's Place. It's located at the intersection of Indian Trail Fairview Road and Stinson Hardest Road, and it's a conditional zoning request. It's to rezone approximately 4.8 acres from light industrial to conditional zoning general business district. The applicants are Heather and Brittany Claus, and it's to allow for the business to hold periodic outdoor events. Here's an aerial map where you can see the subject property outlined in yellow. You can see the on and off ramps for the Monroe bypass where it falls in relation to Indian Trail Fairview Road. Here's the existing site, looking a little bit to the northeast from the parking lot currently near Indian Trail Fairview Road. This is looking to the north towards Stinson Hardest Road. Here's the existing zoning map. Once again, you can see the property outlined in yellow with a star on it. Everything in purple is currently zoned light industrial. Towards the top right, you can see some blue that is general business district in the area, as well as some single-family low-density. Future land use currently calls for office in this area. Analysis and details. It's a business that's on 4.8 acres, and like I said, they would like to hold periodic outdoor events. Based on the current zoning districts, it only allows for three periodic outdoor events per year, and as part of this, they'd like to hold 12, one for each month. You can see some of the neighboring zoning districts, most of which is light industrial, and then across the street in Henby Bridge, there's R20 residential. Here's the concept plan. As you can see, the road that's near the top going from left to right is Stinson Hardest Road. To the right is Indian Trail Fairview Road. Their access would actually be off of Stinson Hardest Road as part of NC DOT requirements, not allowing the access so close to the on-ramps and off-ramps. You may not be able to see it from where you're at, but they have gravel parking out there as well that's part of the existing site. They have 2,000 square feet of retail inside, and they're proposing 3,000 outdoor as part of tents for their pop-up events. And with the UDA requirements for parking, it's 20 spaces required, and they're providing 29, so. And there will be a 25-foot buffer at the rear of the property that you can see on the left side of your screen. Here's some of the architectural elevations from the existing building as it is currently. There are no plans to change the outdoor architecture. County coordination, Union County Public Works, water and sewer is already accessible at the site. Union County Health Department and the Fire Marshal will review at site plan review. Traffic and parking, as a standard, they must meet all town of Indian Trail and NC DOT requirements for spaces per 1,000 square feet of sales area, and as I said, they provided 29 spaces. We had two required community meetings on July 11 via Zoom. The applicant and the staff participated, but there was no other people in attendance. The summary is that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the area. It promotes the goals of community engagement, land use and housing, and economic development, and staff considers this a reasonable request and suggests the conditions listed in the packet. The proposed conditions, 1 through 3, are pretty standard when it comes to coordination with Union County departments for site plan reviews and making sure those are addressed during site plan. The development shall comply with all other applicable town guidelines of the UDA. The town approval incorporates and shall comply with any and all submittals in this case file and correspondence presented to the town council in support of the application, including but not limited to the site-slash-sketch plan, architectural elevations or representations, and any other information related to the case or improvements recommended by the town. Condition four is the main one that they are here for, which is the special events limited to 12 permits within a 12-month period. It doesn't have to be one per month. They can do two in a month, but just 12 in a 12-month period. The special events must comply with the UDA Chapter 440 regarding the temporary use permit approval criteria and standards, and Chapter 450, A through M for criteria and standards. Six, signage must meet the UDA Chapter 440, 040F, and Chapter 970, 060 when securing a permit. They'll also have to have compliance with UDA Chapter 450, 060, also regarding special events, as well as Chapter 1020, which is the off-street parking requirements, which they have already provided on the scaled plan. There will be no parking permitted along Indian Trail Fairview Road or Stinson Hardest Road. The tents all must be placed on pavers, and they're already demarcated on the scaled plan. The architecture of the existing structures cannot change, and the above conditions shall be part of the approval, and the applicant shall see special event operations upon such a time that the, until the site complies with all the conditions. So the requested action for this case would be either a motion to recommend approval for the petition as presented, or recommend approval for the petition with additional conditions, or a motion to recommend denial of the petition. Are there any questions?
I'll jump in. Kind of a compound question. First of all, I'm a little confused on the business. What actually are they providing? Is it employment service, or is it an event activity service, or what?
It is to hold periodic events. So as part of the future land use, it says employment center. Staff believes that this allows for that through allowing other events to have their, have their tents, have their businesses, and other items there. All of these vendors that are coming to hold events at this place have their own employees, and they're all small businesses local to the area, like a pop-up market.
Okay. And that's what the tents are for? And are, what are the tents, what does that mean? I mean, I have a concept in my mind of a tent. Is it more of a pavilion-type thing of each?
No, no, it'd be, it'd be similar to like the 10-by-10 tents that you see at like Family Fun Day that we hold at Crooked Creek Park. And we have the applicant here as well, if y'all would like to ask them any questions.
Who's the?
Heather and Brittany Claus.
The smiling faces in the front.
Would you like, would you like to come up and talk about?
Sure, yeah.
Sure.
I can answer just a few. I'm Heather.
I'm Brittany.
My daughter Brittany, we're a mother-daughter team. It wouldn't necessarily, every single event would have to have a tent, so if it's beautiful, you know, with the fall weather coming up too, we would allow the small business, the goal of, of the community is to bring the small, we truly believe that small business is the heart of the Carolinas. And I truly believe that with that, we can bring a huge camaraderie to our area and to the town of Indian Trail and really connecting Indian Trail and Henby Bridge. There's a lot even heading past that bypass of a lot of people that are just like, oh, we don't have anything this way, you know, let's bring you guys, it's a beautiful piece of property. So even when the weather gets nicer, they don't technically even have to have a tent, but we want to establish like that little 10-by-10 area, they can put up their table, they can promote their business, and they can continue to bring more awareness. And it's not just small businesses. We also give back 80% of what we make to nonprofits. That's Domestic Violence Shelter, Turning Point, Down Syndrome, Association of Greater Charlotte, the Humane Society, Mental Health Alliance.
There's a lot.
It is a lot. Right now, we're helping Cacable Charlotte. We have a huge music festival coming to the Chestnut Park right across the street, November 4th, so we're renting out that space. So we really are trying to take something to a different level, but to show others that you may be getting back for your small business, but the goal of is giving back. So our goal is Kimberly's Place is where your shopping gives back.
What was the percentage you're giving back?
Right now, we've given 80%. We've collected nothing to ourselves yet.
It's an interesting business model.
We believe that.
It's been successful.
It's been very successful, and we believe that if we take back the funds that we've made and give it back into the community or back into our business, we've really, in a, not even a two-year time span since we opened, we opened up in January of 2021 after our friend passed away, and her name was Kimberly. She was actually a teacher here at Indian Trail Elementary for 14 years. So unfortunately, did not do well with mental health. So our goal is to continue to grow that.
Very commendable.
Nice, thank you.
Okay, I see that the tents are going to be placed on pavers. Is that, I drove up to your site over the weekend. Do you have pavers out there already? Are you going to be installing some?
Yes, we will be installing some. The other goal is, because we have plenty of parking, that if there's ever a drought or rain, and then after that, if the ground is still too wet, even with the pavers that are already going to be there, we have enough space to move them on the inside parking lot area as well, so. And the goal is to really try to keep it within existing, trying to do no more than 30 small businesses outside, because we actually have 26 as existing inside already. So we house 26 small businesses already leasing out of space to continue to grow their business.
And I'll say this from my staff, we're, we've started to see a lot more of these pop-up markets come around.
Keep them all around town.
And so this is really our first case to help try and regulate as far as parking and other requirements that are typically found within our ordinance.
Are you going to be taking down any of the trees, or is everything pretty much the way I saw it?
Yes, too beautiful to take down any of the trees. It provides a great shelter-type area to just, especially, yeah, shaded when it gets hot in the summer. That's another reason why a lot of small businesses actually don't really make a lot during the summer, or they try to find elsewhere because it's so hot, but our property really provides.
A good shade.
A very good shade, yeah. But that ground, I mean, I was born and raised here in Charlotte, it's hard surface. It's nothing but rock and clay, but I mean, we totally understand of trying to make and sure safety precautions are, and the biggest goal for us is just making sure that the same, the parking traffic. So we're very aware, we have people, volunteers at every one of our events that are out just making sure everything's going smoothly, so.
And, and the, the number of cars that would come to an event, there's, there is not supposed to be any parking on either one of the streets. Is that going to be, I mean, I don't know what kind of volume of people?
We had an issue a few times, and I mean, unfortunately, you can't control other people, and I mean, some of it's a little common sense. Don't pull on a very busy road, but we've had to go out and say, please move your car. Our entrance is along the backside, which is actually keeping that safety well, but we have gotten those like, was it chloroplast signs that say no parking? So during the event, we put them on the edge of those streets so they can't park in the front. They have to come around back.
It's well-marked and, and people coming to shop are going to know what they are allowed to do.
Yeah, or you see me out there like, don't park there. But yeah, those signs are out there.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we take them down the day of the event and at the end of the event.
Okay, all right.
You mentioned the tents and everything. What are you going to be doing with that larger building over to the right-hand side?
Well, that's.
It's going to be part of the?
That is in the works. So right now, there's another occupancy, there's another leasing owner, but without stealing any of the surprise, that will eventually be coming at a later planning.
Date, but right now, that's not ours.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So Tyler, a question for you. If you could help educate maybe myself and others. So light industrial is what is zoned today, it's being asked for general business district zoning. I understand the reason for the applicant here, what they need for the number of events, but what else can be done with that kind of zoning change? What other kind of businesses can be done there? If most of the adjoining properties are light industrial also, like they are today, and this changes to general business as more of those change, what kind of business does that allow, or what does it not allow?
What does it not allow?
I know.
Yeah. This, this season is specific to just this event type. As far as other GBD properties, if, if they're going through just a regular zoning map amendment, I'd have to go look at the permitted use table. General business district is one of our more broader areas as far as commercial, but it wouldn't be what you'd see on 74, which would be RBD, big box stores, regional business district. It's kind of a transition in between MBD, which is neighborhood, as you're slowly getting there with small medical offices and attorney law offices or something like that, gradually producing up, so it's, it's an in-between area.
Okay, thank you.
And as, as we switch slowly in this area, it's calling for, for more of an employment center, so we see this happening over time gradually.
And the property is close to the Henby Bridge line?
Yeah, so it's a, let me pull back up. Literally across the street on the south side is Henby Bridge.
I've got one question. If going from light industrial to general business, I mean, it sounds to me like it's downzoning. I mean, if it changed, if property changes hand again, are we going to have this property come in front of us, in front of us again, asking to be back to light industrial? I mean, is that?
I mean, I.
I can speak on behalf of this property. I could tell you specifically with the additional piece that we have on there and the owners that we know so well that actually owned that whole entire property, as of right now, no. We are hoping to keep it commercial, retail, because of what the future that we want to do with the owners and what they foresee that they would like to do for the future of the property, and especially bringing more employment. And from my understanding as well, the property adjacent to us, so you see where our white line is around, right across Stinson Hardest, if I'm not mistaken, that's also owned by possibly the town, and there is a.
A DOT, I think.
Yeah, DOT. There is a talk of having something, another business going over there eventually, so I don't see that.
We don't plan on leaving this property.
I just didn't want to see it flip-flopping back and forth.
We don't see that.
It sounded like it's a downzoning to going back to business versus light industrial, but then, you know, if it changes hands or five years, whatever, down the road, then somebody's going to be coming back in here and it's going to be in front of us again, so.
I mean, our goal would be to, eventually to have the ownership of the whole property, but that's something later down the road to talk to the main owners, but we don't foresee that. We're here to stay.
Okay. Any more, any additional questions from the board? Are we ready to vote? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the project number CZ 20022-0036, Kimberly's Place as proposed. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay, it passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Come by and hang out with us.
Okay, Tyler, next on the agenda.
Thank you. So actually, I'm going to take this case, this was Mr. Tim Jones, senior planner, his case. He is at a zoning conference this week, so you're going to have to deal with the backup, I apologize. This is a conventional rezoning for Old Monroe Road and Chestnut Lane, ZM 2022-0079. It's approximately 3.6 acres. You have a mix of current zonings. You've got SF1 and MBD, which Tyler spoke of, which is a kind of a neighborhood business district. We are proposing for all three of the parcels to be general business. The reason why is that they are looking at allowing for commercial finance businesses, maybe some of a little bit harsher uses that the neighborhood business district wouldn't permit. And here is an aerial of the three parcels. So right there on the corner, flanking the corner of Chestnut and Old Monroe Road. If you remember, just a little while ago to the north of it was Clover Senior Living Project that came before this board.
Yep.
That's under construction, where they're moving some dirt around.
Yeah, they're just starting to clear the area.
Right. This is the subject property, looking southwest across Old Monroe Road. This is looking, the property's on the left. Looking southeast, the property's on the right. So looking at the existing zoning, you do see a lot of SF1. See that kind of browner area is Harper's Run that's under construction, Town Homes. Again, the Clover site, which is zoned multifamily in the brown. And then you see closer to the intersection down there, general business district that would, would fit this request. What I will say is that Old Monroe Road is set out to be a super street. NC DOT is actively under right-of-way acquisition, and some properties have changed hands already. So I think that this corridor and our comprehensive plan that you recently adopted speaks to this area transition, and obviously SF1 is not ideal off of a super street. Future land use calls for mixed use in the area, so right now, we're setting ourselves up nicely for a variety of uses. A little bit of more details on the property, again, 3.6 acres. We're requesting to go to general business district. Existing is neighborhood business and single-family. Future land use shows that mixed use, and then you can look at the chart below that shows a variety of uses from multifamily, single-family, and then the senior living apartments as well. Here's the action before you, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions. We do have the applicant here as well. Just, I would ask you to remember that unlike Tyler's case, this is not conditional rezoning, so we don't get to have a laundry list of conditions to add to them. There's not a concept plan that we kind of get to get in the weeds with them about. It's just a straight rezoning.
Is there, considering the super street going through as the developer, well, is, but it's not really, is it a development we're talking about, or just the rezoning?
So they're just rezoning the three parcels of land anticipation for commercial development, but they don't know they're in user at this time, so they don't have a concept plan that we could identify land use and how many parking spaces, so just a conventional rezoning to, to allow them to market it.
Allow that kind of development?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Now, they would be, if, if the rezoning were to be approved, they would be bound by the Unified Development Ordinance, so they don't get to condition any of those regulations out. If they can't meet that, then they would have to come back with a CZ request.
Okay. Okay, questions from the board? Larry? All right, Larry, you always have questions.
I'm just waiting to give everybody else a chance.
Okay, I don't think we have any other questions. Do you have questions, Larry?
No, I was going to form one, but I guess I'll ask it. So I think, Randy, you mentioned that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the, for the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I noticed in the action required part of our paperwork here that it says we're required to make two consistent findings, one for the following goals of the comprehensive plan, and the other for the rezoning request is reasonable and is in the public interest. So I guess that's kind of self-explanatory, since you said it's, it's really just for a rezoning request.
Right.
Without having a plan that we can actually see brick and mortar is going to be going in or changing or something.
Correct. So those findings of facts is what you should be thinking about when you're looking at approving or denying a request such as this, and you really want to think about, you know, is it consistent with the surrounding? Is it going to protect the integrity of the surrounding area? You know, for example, if you were, if this were a request to rezone it to heavy industrial, then you probably wouldn't be able to make those findings of facts.
Right. Isn't there a structure on one of those parcels today?
There is, yes.
I'm good.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that, that ZM 2022-009 be approved.
A second.
Can we amend that motion to be 0079?
It's 0079.
Okay, sorry, misread.
That's okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Did we get a second?
We don't need a second.
We don't need a second.
A second.
Okay.
Yeah, I, that's a question I asked quite several months ago. Do we need a second? And Randy said, no, we don't.
Okay.
Well, I like the second, I'm so used to it, but our clerk and attorney said, no, you don't need one, but I still, I still wait for a second, so I'm with you.
Yeah, that's what we're used to.
I got you.
Okay. So now, as far as voting is concerned, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries unanimously. Oh, sir. Okay, now we have elections. It's been a while. How do we do this?
So we, we will take nominations from the floor for chair. We do have our, our current chair obviously is present, our vice chair is not present. We do have our, our current chair obviously is present, our vice chair is not present. So you guys feel free, if you want to throw out nominations from the floor, and we will vote on them. If you feel more comfortable waiting till the vice chair is, is here, if you wanted to make a change there. We are a little bit flexible in this. Our bylaws are a little vague, so, so I'm happy to entertain whatever you guys are, are wanting to do tonight with the vice chair position.
I would really like to have a full board in order to, to have the election, but I'll go by whatever everybody else wants to do.
And I do, Lori, would you maybe speak to Natania's absence today, just to?
Of course. Should I be recording this?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. It, it is, I just, I'm not sure. Natania has, her father's terminally ill, so the reason why she's not here tonight is we told her we got evil covered it, and she can be with her father in his final days.
And Joe?
Joe, last minute this afternoon texted me that he can't make it. He was planning on coming, and then I'm not sure of the reasoning.
Okay.
So the bylaws speak to having, you can have an election every July. We didn't have a meeting in July, so we certainly didn't want to bring you out just for that in July, and ruin your vacation. So we can be flexible if the board wants to wait till there's a full board. There, there is no guarantees of that, but.
That is true. I'll make a nomination, Mr. Larry Dukes for president.
I'd like to second that nomination for Larry Dukes as chairman.
I'm a chairman, I'm sorry. Give me both.
Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Okay, let's take a vote on that. All in favor for Larry Dukes as chairman?
Aye.
Aye.
And moving on to vice chair.
I'd like to make a nomination for Cynthia Wiley.
Any other nominations from the floor? Okay, we'll take a vote on Cynthia Wiley as vice chair.
Aye.
Okay, all righty. Lori will administer the oaths to each of you.
Um, would you mind stepping forward, please? We'll sit first. And if you can just put your left hand, do we do it individually? Okay, so left hand, right hand, and if I can do that, and repeat after me. Actually, we can do it.
Uh, Cynthia Wiley, you do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, if not consistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office and the vice chair of Indian Trail Planning Board, so help me God.
Can I get a quick?
Can I get a quick ticket?
Okay.
Hi, Larry Dukes, you solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, if not consistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as chair of the Indian Trail Planning Board, so help me God.
Oh, this is yours, I'm sorry. I told you to do this.
Thank you.
Do they have to sign something?
You signed it.
Yeah.
This is my first, I wasn't ready. You signed it here and.
Yes, and then it's notarized, uh-huh. So you need us to sign?
Yeah.
Sign here? Thank you. And the first paycheck is when?
Actually, we're, we're going to take on a double our salary.
There we go. Great. I got two jobs that don't pay anything. Wonderful.
Now, when, does this take place now, or with the next meeting? Who does the adjournment?
The next meeting, I would like for you to, to do the adjournment, but I do have a couple of quick announcements, very exciting news. So we, I think, last meeting, we talked about Matt relocating due to his mother. He, he definitely made the right decision, as her diagnosis has, has not been well recently. He did take a position as Economic Development Director with Mitchell County, so he's settling in over the last few weeks with that position and trying to learn a little different angle of, of community development. That created a vacancy in our department, and we were able to promote within. So Tyler is now our senior planner.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're, thank you. We're, we're just extremely grateful that we're able to promote from within. Being a small department, we lose a lot of folks to Charlotte or other jurisdictions that have, you know, higher-level positions. We also have sad news to report, that Lori has been promoted internally to a lot of changes. She's our solid waste coordinator, so Pam Goodman retired last week, week before?
The 11th.
Last week, the 11th, and created a position there in Public Works, so she has transitioned over to Public Works, but she's, she still loves us so much, she wanted to be right beside us, so we're happy that she's close by. So we are, we are feeling a little bit of holes, we're, we're feeling the pressure with having some vacancies, but we are excited to have a, an interview tomorrow for another internal candidate to fill Tyler's position possibly, and then we'll go from there. So a lot of changes, but very good, good things.
Good. All right, sounds good. Okay, there being no additional business, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Thank you.